I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broome. We have a full quorum with all council members present, Councilman Clay, Councilman Karn, Councilman Allen, and Councilman Gay. It is 8:08 PM. I'm calling our meeting to order at this time. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our invocation is going to be handled by Chaplain Walker this evening.
Mayor, City Councilman. Let us pray. Oh Lord, our Lord, hallowed be your name. As we gather in your name for this city council meeting, we do so with a great deal of anxiety and uncertainty. We appeal to you that we need care and we need comfort. We need to focus on universal love. May your spirit touch our hearts and our minds to help us do clear thinking in the midst of change. We all know that change is inevitable. We also know that psychologically we have a tendency to resist change and we become very anxious. We have feelings of insecurity and unknowing, not clear where we are, not clear where we're going. Use this meeting, oh God, to help us love one another, to find our way forward. Help us in our deliberations so that we have clear and focused minds for all people of College Park. We pause and give thanks for our mayor and our city council members and all those who work in city services. A special prayer goes for the first responders, our police and fire departments, because they embody the courage to be in face of uncertainty, danger, and radical change. Our chiefs and our commanders are to be kept close to our hearts and our minds as they give their service to us for our benefit. And now it is our hope that when it comes time for us to leave this meeting, may we feel, may we reason, may we be aware that hopefully we're better off than when we came. Because being here is a chance to change who we have been and who we want to be. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Item number two, additions, deletions, amendments, and changes to the agenda. Mr. Myers?
Yes, I would like to, 6A, 6A, I would like to defer that item.
So that will be removed?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to also add 7D. The item we're moving from the workshop to 7D for the capital of improvement projects for the GICC.
Okay.
What about 7B that is already there?
7B is already there.
Right.
7D. He was saying D is in...
So you're replacing it and that's going to become...
No, sir, he's adding, he's adding D.
I'm adding 7D.
D is in dog.
Dog.
Oh, D, I beg your pardon.
Yeah, B is still there.
Right. I just misheard.
All right, and then I would like to add 8F. 8F.
And that would be consideration of and action on looping the water system on John Calvin Avenue?
Yes.
Any other additions, deletions, amendments, or changes?
No ma'am.
Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, I believe that is unanimous. Item 3A is presentation of the regular session minutes from October 3rd. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. Item 3B is approval of the workshop session minutes from October 3rd. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. We do not have any proclamations, resolutions, plaques, or announcements this evening, so we will move to the remarks of citizens. Ms. Ames, can you let everyone know what the parameters are and how we will proceed?
Yes ma'am, if you want, you can speak for three minutes. The signing sheet is available at the podium until we start council meeting. You can also email your comments into pcomment@collegeparkga.com. By 7 o'clock, if those comments are in, I will read those comments in the record. My first comment is from Jamil McKenzie.
Should I, are we doing the clock? Or are we just, okay. Yeah. Well, I can say hello while we're waiting, and you all know that I'm Jamil McKenzie and I live at 2447 Odell Way. Alrighty, I want to begin by just acknowledging that it was an amazing weekend that we had here in the city of College Park. For those of you that were able to attend the Fall Festival and the ribbon cutting for the splash pad, I just want to say to Councilman Gay, you did a fabulous job. I've never seen anything like that in the city of College Park, and I just want to thank you and I guess all the staff and for all that you did. I'm sure it'll be brought up again. Ignite was there, we gave away over 800 books through our Read to Succeed, as you know, that we held Read to Succeed events in every single one of our wards. So the last ward was the Ward Four, and we were just really happy to be able to be a blessing to so many people and just to see the people out this past weekend. I also want to thank, very grateful to say thank you for the award that was given to me on behalf of the city of College Park, which was for outstanding leadership as being the chairman of the Business Industrial Development Authority, as well as my role as the Executive Director of Ignite. And I, you know, I think that when people give you flowers, you ought to say thank you, and so I'm very honored. I'm honored to serve in the capacities that I serve. I love this city, and I love to see what's going on and the positivity. I didn't speak at the hearing because I've already made my voice clear, and from what I've heard and just in terms of what people were saying, I would just say again to the mayor and council, let us consider the voice of the people. Let us hear what the people are saying. What I'm hearing is that maybe there are some other options. Let's continue to investigate the other options that we can find. Let's use transparency, and if we can give this some time, maybe this is something that we don't have to do this week, or this month, or this, by the end of this year. Taxes, revenues are coming in, they're going to be increased. Maybe we need to do some more investigation, some more listening. I know we need the money, and I do trust you that you will find it and do what's best on behalf of the citizens of College Park. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ames.
Next is Bertha Hightower Smith to discuss African-American heritage of College Park.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Motley Broome and fellow councilmen and also officers of the city. We want to thank you for the opportunity to stand before you tonight. My name is Bertha Hightower Smith, and I am here along with some of the committee members for preserving the African-American heritage of College Park. The old African-American community in College Park was situated west of Main Street. This is some information for a lot of you who don't know that, the original African-American community. Like many other Southern American, African-American communities during segregation, this community was thriving and economically self-sustaining with businesses, churches, schools, et cetera. We stand on the shoulders of our ancestors of College Park, who lived in and built this community and the great city of College Park. And as you know, in the latter seventies and eighties, the citizens of this community were uprooted and misplaced due to the land purchase by the Atlanta-Hartsville Airport. The homes and businesses were torn down. I come to you with a proposal for preserving the rich heritage of this community. Number one, obtaining Price Barber Shop and the house adjacent to it, positioning for both structures to be placed on the historic registry for the purpose of creating a museum. Number two, historical markers where churches, schools, businesses, et cetera, once occupied. Number three, bricks with the names and addresses of the indigenous families. These bricks are to be laid on the sidewalk in front of the museum. Number four, museum be placed with the Chamber of Commerce to create its visibility as a tourist attraction, utilizing tour guides to the historic sites. Lastly, we would like to have a seat, a seat at the table for creating and assisting with historical data and placement. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Elizabeth Gibson to discuss Free Park Community Event. I believe this item is on the agenda for consideration.
This is on the agenda?
Yes.
So, we're going to have an opportunity to address this on the agenda, because it is an agenda item, so you'll have an opportunity to speak on it. That's, all right.
Next is Ginger Blackstone, 1928 Walker, to discuss Historic Plague.
Good evening. I'm going to be quick, I'm a little confused about all of the historic comments down here because I understood that there were some historic plaques that are going to be placed by Kennesaw State. I mean, I'm just reading, which I applaud, I'm thrilled. I've been trying to segue the College Park Historical Society, which was in the eighties, and everyone, starting with my great-grandmother, was a founding member. We have a number of people who are not white. I do live in the, in Ambrose's District, whatever one. But what I am trying to do and have been trying, and we have been trying, is to embrace our city as a whole. I don't care what your heritage is. If you're College Park, you're College Park. I grew up here, I lived in Newton Estates, which was not built for the, it was not a black community. We were totally segregated. I didn't get to have any black friends, and they didn't get to have any white friends, and we were taught on both sides to be afraid of one another. Well, we aren't like that now. We have a, we have a very mixed and beautiful community. I would love to, I'm thrilled to hear that there's an organized group again to embrace the black historic, I remember Price's Barber Shop, you know. I would, I'm confused about the Kennesaw thing. I'm wondering if there's any money coming from College Park to do that, because we never receive a penny from our 501, for our 501(c)(3), which is the official College Park Historical Society. I see a real value in merging this, but there's not a lot of money, and COVID put the kibosh on it. The last presentation we had was Black History Month when, in February, I believe it would have been, and that was right as COVID was kicked in, but someone came in and stole, they threw it right through the window, but I, I know someone had to use a key, because they couldn't climb through, went like that, came in and they stole treasures that we had received from the informal black historic group that y'all all know about. At any rate, they stole a signed picture of, original from Walt Bellamy, who is no longer with us. They stole a football jacket. They stole things that couldn't be replaced. Too much access to that building, it has cut down tremendously under our current rector, but it's, we get no funding there, we don't ask for funding, but if there's something common to benefit the black community, we're not a black community, we're a community. And I just want y'all to know, we're here.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Can I tell, can I tell the community about a party for everybody tomorrow night?
I'm so sorry, we, we, three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ames?
The next comment is an email comment from Grace Phillips, and it reads, "Last week on October 13th, a grant program our city checks every box for was passed by. The $200 million U.S. Department of Transportation Reconnecting Communities Grant for discretionary planning and capital improvements aligned perfectly with the needs of our, with the needs of our community and our new bridge, but we missed the deadline and barely knew about it. Mayor and council, please give support to our city with a staff member, interim at least, dedicated to helping the Office of Economic Development to get the materials together in a unified, accessible way for the office to put College Park in the running for these kinds of funds. 125 communities will share these funds, and we won't be one of them. Thankfully, the tri-cities will still have an opportunity to receive the US$ money because East Point applied and the Air Trapoli's Greenway Plan was added in the 11th hour. We are worthy of these funds. Please support our city staff so we don't miss out again. Thank you, Grace Lonsford. I have no other comments."
Does anyone else wish to speak for three minutes? Come on down.
I emailed my comment earlier, but I thought I would just say them in person. First, I want to say that I'm a proud citizen of Ward Four. My wife and myself and my grandchildren was blessed to go to the wonderful event in Ward Four, and it was an absolutely wonderful event, Councilman Rodrick Gay, and I want to commend you. And one thing I want to say that I like about Councilman Rodrick Gay is that every time I see him, I see him with his family. It's strong families that make a strong community. And we have to start repairing the family. I see his wife all the time and his children supporting him in what he does. And we have so many dysfunctional families in College Park, single-family households that we need to start addressing. It's a good image, and I don't think it's a hypocritical or political image, it's a good image. It was a peaceful event because we had our wonderful chief of police, had those soldiers, wonderful, they was hospitable, it was peaceful, there was no bad incident, and we have a good chief of police. And what baffles me is that I look on the website and see you looking for another chief. What also baffles me, I was at the pastor leadership conference of yours, Mayor, and you unveiled the wonderful black city manager, but now she's gone, I see a white interim city manager, Mr. Myers. I don't know what happened, and no one's saying anything to us as constituents. What's going on? We have a good black chief of police, and I don't want to hear about her being harassed because you think you got the power. You're not the power, and God's going to show you, you're not the power. You need to humble yourself, and you need to start listening to what the people want, or God will remove you. Now you might say, I'm sick of him. Well, maybe we sick of you too, because we're sick of you actually making decisions that that not reflect the will of the people. So take it down, take it down about you're looking for a black chief of police and ask what we think. And I don't agree with this manager, Mr. Myers, for many reasons about complaints on him. How did he become an interim? But when, how, what happened to our black city manager? You just get rid of people because you feel like it? That's not how life works. It has to be a just criterion. So I pray that you reconsider the way you're thinking, the way you're treating these head of staff, they're not your slaves. You're not God. You're not God, and God will one day show you, you're not him. Humble yourself, and I close with the Bible. When will the corruption or the corruptible put on the incorruptible? God bless you with the light of understanding, as I greet you in peace. Assalamu alaikum.
Wa alaikum wa salam, Mr. Muhammad, thank you very much.
My name is Ken Jenkins, I'm at 4062 Glenda Drive, been there approximately 39 years, and I'm coming to the podium to speak on the city manager. Not that Mr. Myers is doing a good job or a bad job, but we've been working under the premise of interim for over about a year now, almost a year now. And I really think that it's hard to do business when somebody has the label interim. It's like an interim coach. Interim coach isn't going to the Super Bowl, the head coach is going to go to the Super Bowl, he's going to pick who he wants to pick, and I think that process needs to be taken into consideration, because the city manager needs to know the people that he's hiring in his different departments. And it's not, this isn't a negative comment, but I just think without that direction, we're going to be stumbling along the way. And that's kind of where, we've been over that like the last year, and so I think it's imperative that we put priority on whoever we're going to get for city manager and let them pick their team and let them go forward, and I think it's going to be a lot easier to come together as a city if we have somebody that's going to lead us that way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, city elected officials. My name is Larry Brady Evans, I reside at 2112 West Princeton, where I've lived for the last 63 years of my life. I've heard the ugly and the bad, and it's not for me to judge, it's the truth of the matter, but tonight, I'd like to greet you all in the greetings of peace and understanding. And I'd like to greet you all with the good that I've gotten over the past month of living here in the city of College Park. And I'm the only original resident that lives in the black community that my former neighbors were speaking of. But I'd like to commend you, Mayor, for your reward that you got for serving, one of the 100 women to do what you do in your, on your job. Rodrick Gay, I can't say nothing no different than what I've already heard. You did an outstanding job, outstanding, and you made me very proud to be in College Park. And I saw people from all wards, it wasn't just your ward, it was all wards, and that's what we all are, part of the human race. Ain't no this race, that race, we all part of the human race, and when we start to respect each other with truth, as God has created, created us all, I think there'd be peace and healing in the land. And I want to give a special thanks to the fire department. Those guys came out and they represented beautifully, with the children and everybody. And for me personally, a tree fell in my community, where I'm the only one, and it was on a Saturday, and I had no power. I called 911, College Park Power was out there in 30 minutes, and they had this guy, I want to commend him and his family. They called him Squirrel. Squirrel went up that post and got my power back on, and that says a lot to me. So I'd like to commend all of you all. I've heard the good, the bad, and the ugly. So let's move forward. The God's will be done, not our will, but thou will be done. Thank you, as I came before you, in the greetings of peace.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Sharonda Dobson. I'm new here and I'm actually thankful to be a part of what you all are doing tonight, coming together and sharing ideas and trying to make the community better. On a very positive note, I am here with Serena Willis, and I have an honor of being here with her today, because she was part of the event that just happened on October 4th. It was through the Atlanta Business League, which is an organization that recognizes the top 100 black women of influence. These women have significantly impacted the metro Atlanta community. Due to their dedication and hard work, they all have demonstrated their commitment to the citizenry of metro Atlanta by maintaining significant involvement and participation in community and civic activities. On October 4th, your very own College Park community leader, Sabrina Willis, was the second award finalist of Success Against the Odds and received this great honor and recognition for her contributions. Sabrina was personally showcased at the 38th Annual Super Tuesday Conference where she received this award, and I think she should be commended on all the things she has done so far in College Park and the College Park community, and the things she continued to strive to do. And I'm here as an honor to be her friend and a witness to what, to her receiving that award, and then just knowing all the things she has done as far as contributing to this great community. So I just wanted her to receive recognition for that and thought that would be something great for you all to celebrate.
Thank you, Sharonda. Sabrina Willis, last week, it's been a tough week, and many of you know, we lost our home through fire, and the next day I had to show up for Super Tuesday to get the award. And it was hard for me, and I met Ms. Sharonda there, and just her listening and hearing the story. And just her listening and hearing the story. And I shouted out College Park. And what a great city. And I just wanted to be there to show up. But sometimes, you know, when things hit you and they hit you hard, you have to be able to keep moving forward. And I just, you know, thank you all. College Park Fire, y'all are wonderful. College Park Police Department, y'all are wonderful. Mayor and Council, you all are wonderful. Thanks for, you know, being there, because that was a tough night. And everybody worked hard to take care of that situation. So, I just want to say thank you. And I gotta say this, on Saturday, I attended the Fall Festival over at Phillips Park. And that's community. And I think that's the community that I had such a wonderful time and just seeing people enjoying themselves and the activities. That was a day well spent, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you to College Park Fire Department. Serena took some of my work, so I'm gonna be quick. I have so much, I really got a chance to see what they really do. And they really fought that fire. And they hadn't afforded so hard, it would've got the house on the side of us and behind us. That fire really burned, as anybody over there said. So, thank you, College Park, for working so hard. And it makes me feel good. My son is a firefighter, so is a part of that, so I'm thankful for that. Ambrose, thank you for coming by, taking a moment, and I really appreciate that. Joe, you came by, thank you very much. Ken, you came by also, I appreciate it. Rodrick, as Sabrina said, what you did on Saturday, it was so awesome. Thank you for the award. I always said this, men, you don't have that difference back and forth. I support you. You really do care about your ward, and you do a lot of great things. I know sometimes people feel you come off the wrong way, but you really fight for your constituents, and that's important. Thank you, Jackson, also for reaching out, I appreciate it, and many others. It was very devastating to lose over forty years. Now, I didn't hear from the mayor. I'm not gonna be smashed, but I didn't. Right, I'm her neighbor. Anybody else, I know she would've reached out. We had something today with Jack Longino. Jack would've been there. Well, he's my friend, so I'm not knocking it, but I'm a constituent. Regardless of the politics, just a text, say, "Hey, Mr. Willis or Rex, I'm sorry to say you lost out." She didn't. And that's sorry. I'm gonna tell you, that's what it is, sorry. And you talking about since you've been here, you're gonna bring us together? I haven't seen it. People say, "Rex, oh, you come down here all the time." Yeah, 'cause I get off my butt and do something about it, about supporting this community. Every Sabrina, and overly to get her off the fight, Sabrina have continued fighting for the city, representing the city. Jack never was vindictive. Ambrose, you know it. Joe, you know it. Ken, you know it. So do Rodrick, you voted for it, for his name. You know she didn't want his name up there. No, I might, shouldn't be saying it. I'm gonna say it. Because people need to know who represent them behind closed doors. I'm not gonna go behind you and talk about you. If I got something to say, I say it to your face. So, it's wrong. We do need to come together. We need to love more each other. But being vindictive because I don't support you, that's wrong. Kick you when you're down, it's wrong. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. Mayor and Council. My name is Zeron Pledger. I'm from forty-three fifty Janus Drive, is where I currently reside. And I just wanted to come up and just kind of first thank, I did an event a few weeks ago called Push for Change. And I wanted to thank Mercedes Miller, Darrell Lloyd, over at the GICC for working with us to try to get that event put together. I want to thank our chief and was a captain, captain, let me make sure I have my names right. Say it again? Captain Wilson and Major Ward for coming and being panelists for our event. And the Push for Change event was an event for, where we were working for, to fight against violence, to fight against the things that our young people see, ultimately change what they see and then hopefully change what they do and ultimately change the decisions that they make. So, it was great for them to be a part of that. Mayor, I thank you, Mayor, for coming out and bringing greetings for our gala on that evening. And I say all of this because as I sit and I listen to everyone, that day showed me that when we come together at the city of College Park, it can be phenomenal. When everybody put their personal agendas aside and focus on the things that are important for the community and for those that live in the community, it showed me how phenomenal it can be. So, as I sit and I listen to the things that are going on, where people have vendettas, they have personal agendas, they have personal objectives, it's like it defeats the purpose of community. When I think of community, you think about regardless of the color of a person's skin, where they live, what ward they live in, it's for the collective. And we have to get to a place, and I've had conversations with Gay, I've had conversations with the mayor, I've had conversations with Khan, I've had conversations with Clay, haven't spoken to you as much, Councilman Allen, but I've even had conversations with some of the people that are here in the audience. And we have to figure out what steps can be taken to where we separate ourselves from the personal agendas and figure out what we can do collectively to push this city forward. Because it's a sad situation when we have a black eye due to the fact that things are being said about how we do things in silos opposed to how we can be beautified as we talk about doing things collectively. So, as you guys know me, I'm constantly in the community, constantly having conversations with people. I'm not going away. And I have to agree with something that my friend said earlier about the interim city manager. I'm not sure what the situation is with the city manager, what happened to the last city manager. However, it's kind of challenging for the city manager to be the person that pretty much runs the day-to-day operations, but being the interim and not being able to oversee the hiring practices or the hiring of those that are coming in as department heads and other positions. So, that's something else I think that we need to consider as well. Think about what we need to do to have a full-time city manager, if it's the one that's currently here or if it's someone that we bring to the table, so that that person can understand the personalities and the dynamics of what's going on with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Item six A has been removed. Item seven A is consideration of-
Madam Mayor, the email comment.
Oh, I apologize, you have one more email comment. Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Okay, we have one comment that was overlooked, my apologies. But it's from Ms. Jessie Phillips, and it reads, "Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jessie Phillips. First, I would like to acknowledge that Councilman Gay put on an awesome Fall Festival on Saturday. It made our city look good. It was well-attended and enjoyed by all. Thank you, Councilman Gay. The dedication for Mayor Longino this afternoon was a decent program. Mayor Longino was a very honorable man who truly loved the city of College Park and gave twenty-eight years of dedicated service to this city. There are no perfect people, we all make mistakes. Since we all make mistakes, we need to learn how to be more forgiving to each other. I'm not saying that Mayor Longino was perfect, but he was a decent man who tried to treat everyone with respect. He didn't always get the same treatment back. I cannot understand why the publicity and communications was so low-key about naming, the naming of this facility for Mayor Longino. I received an email invitation a week ago. Not everyone has email, and the city doesn't have all the email addresses of the citizens with emails. There are many citizens who have been in, that who, there are many citizens who would have been in attendance if they had known about this event for Mayor Longino. Once I received the email, I passed it on to other citizens who did not receive it, and they were so pleased and grateful to get the information in time to RSVP. Why weren't the, why weren't there more seats? Your expectation was small. With the communications and staff that we have in the city, this should not be. The same day I received the invitation, I also received an announcement for the Christmas parade scheduled for December. So, why couldn't we have gotten an announcement for the naming of this facility out long before and prior to Monday a week ago? We have got to do better. This did not hurt Mayor Longino, nor was it a reflection on him. It was a reflection on the city officials now. What were you thinking? What did you hope to prove? All your neighboring cities should have been invited. Was it intent to keep it small so that it looks like citizens didn't care about Mayor Longino? I don't think it worked. It only made people look at you as our leaders. Jack was truly loved, and citizens will not forget, especially those who learned about the celebration after the fact. Let's get away from the envy and strife and get on with the real business. Concentrate more on the citizens of College Park and their needs. The naming of City Hall for Jack is something that he wanted, and I think this, I think his twenty-eight years of dedicated service to the city of College Park is cause for him to receive this very deserving honor." That is all.
Thank you very much. All right, so we will move on to item seven A, which is consideration of an action on a request from New Hope World Outreach to hold a community outreach event on October twenty-ninth from ten to three at Zup Park.
Yes, ma'am. So, this is a special event request from Ms. Elizabeth Gibson, who is here, to hold a community event at Zup Park. They're not requesting any special needs from the city, just the use of the park. And they're here for any questions that you have in.
All right, any questions? We'll start with Councilman Clay.
I have none. I'm fine.
Councilman Carr?
It's not my word, though.
Sounds like a great event. How many people are you expecting?
Maybe about sixty. It may be more because it's an open, free party then, so we can't really-
Sounds like a good event. I guess, are we invited as well? Can we come by and say hello? All right. Thank you. This is, this sounds great.
Councilman Allen?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Are you gonna be running all the pavilions, or how is that gonna work?
Not all the pavil-, we really only need one. We just need an open space. This is an event that we did a couple of years ago, but it was at the Airport Executive Park where our, we have a small church there. But we gave out free food, free clothing, free games. The police department was there, the fire department was there. And we've given out a hundred coats to, to schools in College Park, which the principals were glad to see because the kids did not have coats. And we gave out scarves and hats and gloves. We're looking to do more community things where we can help the community, even though we're small.
The other comment I have is, we had an event there not too long ago. Are you gonna be having any loud music or loudspeakers or?
We'll have speakers, but they won't be loud.
Okay, and the reason why I ask that, there's a cemetery right next door and, or right across the street. And the last time they had an event there, they had a graveside service for someone, and there was loudspeakers and music, which kind of disrupted the service that they were having. So, I think we need to get, make sure you get in touch with the cemetery to let them know that you're gonna be there. And there's not gonna be any loud noise.
We don't even have loudspeakers.
Okay.
Not yet.
Councilman Gay, any questions?
No.
All right, at this time, is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Carr, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven B is consideration of an action on approval of the proposed twenty-twenty-three City Council meeting schedule. Any questions from Ms. Ames on this one?
I have one question. Is there any dates different from the last calendar year?
No.
There is one correction, no. You had omitted the, you had included a first meeting in July, which we don't normally have, and you responded to me that that was a mistake and there is no first meeting in July.
And I also sent that to the rest of councils.
Pardon?
I also sent that out to the rest of council as well, so they have a better schedule.
So, we're good.
And the twentieth, it's February, is President's Day. We don't celebrate, we don't have a holiday for President's Day.
Not for President's Day, no, sorry.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Gay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. Item C is consideration of an action on a resolution to amend the proposed homestead legislation. I'll let Mr. Denmark walk us through this.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, the, in the initial resolution we adopted, the gross income was not adequately defined. And so, this amendment to the legislation would define or tether gross income to a full retirement age, as that term is defined in the Social Security Act. And so, that is a, an objective benchmark that would avoid kind of fluctuations. And it would be, as that statutory term were amended by Congress, we would be still bound by full retirement age, as that term is defined in the statute.
At this point, as we sit here today, that's approximately the forty thousand dollar range?
Forty, yes. Forty, forty-one, forty thousand. And if it were for couples, then it would be double that. So, you would get credit for you and a spouse.
Questions, starting with Councilman Clay?
Yeah, just, just a comment, I want to make sure that we're all in sync on this. I've had a dialogue back and forth with Danielle. She made a couple of changes, improved the wording a little bit in there. But the one thing that is not spelled out in detail, although I think it can be inferred, is that if a person is single, living by themselves in their own home, which is their homestead, the benefit, the limit on income is forty thousand, it's what the Social Security says, for a person filing single. But if they are living there with their spouse, the limit is twice that amount.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And it only really addresses the case of someone living with their spouse. It doesn't specifically say that if you're not living with your spouse, the income limitation on the filing, the social, the federal tax filing, is forty thousand, whatever it is, forty thousand plus. I just want to make that clear. I think it's okay, but I don't want everybody thinking that everybody gets an eighty thousand dollar means limit as opposed to forty or eighty, depending on whether you are filing as one person there or whether there's both people there filing. And is that, does that, does everybody understand that? Is that? Okay.
That's a good catch.
Councilman Carr?
What is, what is the full retirement age currently?
I believe it's sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. Okay. And my understanding is just a matter of time that that is gonna lower, I think, in the future at some point with the boom of senior citizens, apparently coming into the next ten years supposedly. But-
Wait a minute, Joe. Clarification. It's the amount Social Security grants you at full retirement, but it is effective, in our case, at sixty-five.
So, our number is not changed?
Our number, and that's an important clarification. For our purposes, you're eligible at age sixty-five to receive the homestead exemption. And how we calculate the income is based on full retirement age.
Right, gotcha.
That's an important distinction.
I just wanted to make sure that people were clear on that because when you mention that, you know, someone may think fluctuation, but it's in here in our age, sixty-five.
Yes.
Or older. All right.
Councilman Allen?
No questions.
Councilman Gay?
So, so, at sixty-five years of age, this resolution is that your means or how much you make can't exceed forty thousand dollars per person?
Yeah, it, you would, the income, the gross income limit is what you would get at full retirement age for Social Security, which is about forty-some odd thousand a year.
So, if a school- So, if a school-
This year, right.
So, if a school teacher has a pension, a very small pension, they would be ineligible because- they would be ineligible because they have this pension over their Social Security limits?
No, we're, we're looking at gross income, and so it would just be, it would just be a number. So it would depend on what that, how much, uh, that individual earned.
I mean, my comment is that I proposed this senior exemption, what, a year ago? During COVID, I spent maybe four hours on a Zoom call with Ms. Miller, Councilman Clay. I never would have thought in a million years that this would have created such controversy from being signed by the governor to being threatened by the Secretary of State to come down here and force us to put on a ballot and to the night, we, we still, I, I just wish we would put this much passion in some other thought. This is amazing that this took, uh, the turn that it took. And yet it still had to be passed by the governor. So this is no automatic. Uh, one last question. What does this cost? Because when I proposed it, we were careful to calculate the cost through the tax office. So what does this cost us, citizens? What, what does this cost to our budget approximately? When, when, when the governor signed it, it was one point eight million. It was eight hundred to what, one point, so what does this cost?
I'm sorry, you quoted eight hundred thousand?
No, when we had two other proposals that, that we asked you all to give us a cost of the legislation. What does this cost us?
About a hundred and eighty thousand.
A hundred and eighty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And if you wanna clarify it even further, it's, as I recall, it's typically line thirty-nine on your ten forty form. Adjusted gross income.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Allen, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. Item seven D is a update on GICC capital plans.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanna give an update on the capital improvements that we're doing at the GICC. Um, first of all, we are, um, trying to keep money in tourist product development. Currently, we have a budget of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And also SPOSS, which is over a million dollars. But I do need to explain that these are special revenue, um, funds, and they are, you have to use them for a specific reason by law. And the way that we can use them, we can use them for the convention center or any improvements, and some of them only on the side of Clayton County. So these are not funds that can be used for anything else in the city. Um, so this year, we are going to put cameras over in the golf course um, and have those cameras connected to our security office at the convention center, uh, because we've had a couple of break-ins over there. So we think it will keep it more secure, uh, in that area. We also had a fire panel that we had on the budget. To replace the fire panel was about half a million dollars. So I had a conversation with the person that was handling the fire panel. What I found out is that we can upgrade most of the parts. And if we upgrade most of the parts, it will actually cost us eighty-six thousand dollars. And that would give us some life longevity of ten to fifteen years. So that frees up some funding for me to use to replace the, um, we have a way, we need wayfinding signage around the building. So we will be replacing the wayfinding signage. We also have two bids for the roof repair that we mentioned at one of the other meetings. What we found out was that the roof repair will be between fifteen and eighteen thousand dollars. So we have two bids, we're gonna get one more bid, and we have funded because of our savings that we're gonna be able to get the roof repaired. We are trying to save, uh, a lot of the SPOSS funding so that we can get the roof glazed to extend the life of the, of the roof. We, even if we could get half done one year, the other half another year. Uh, getting it glazed will extend the life of the roof for about fifteen years. The roofer said the, the roof is actually in pretty good condition. So repairing that roof and having it glazed will, uh, will prolong its life. Uh, and the other things that we are getting is an internal digital signage. If you have been to the building, we usually have signage on the side of each room that tells you what the name of the meeting is, what time it starts, what time it ends. We also have a board that gives you information regarding the flights at the airport. Uh, those need to be replaced, they are no longer working. But we're gonna use SPOSS money, which again is a special funding. Uh, we're gonna use SPOSS money to repair that. And we'll still have money sitting there in case we have any emergencies or if we have any emergency repairs at the convention center. Are there any questions? Thank you so much.
I, I, I have a comment.
Councilman Clay?
I have a comment. I wish some of the people who were here during the hearing for the millage rate increase, who made the comment, well, we ought to be looking for ways to cut costs, save costs, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I think, Mercedes, I wanna compliment you. I think you are the perfect example of coming up with creative ways to stretch our money.
Thank you.
And, uh, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Carr?
Ditto on that. Uh, Mercedes definitely knows how to, uh, make a nickel holler. Uh, but that's exactly what we're looking for, and she does a wonderful job of that. And she is an example of savings. She also is an example of some of the things that we dealt with earlier this year. Whereas, again, grabbing the reins of our budgetary process, we have to have it. And in order to have control of our budgetary process, uh, our department heads, uh, have to be free to be able to bring to us the issues so we can allocate appropriately. Everything that you mentioned, I think is something that needs to be done. Obviously, it's overdue. I have definitely advocated for taking care of the things we have right now. Uh, with the exception of the cameras on the golf course, now that's something, uh, those may need to be, uh, included in other discussions, city manager, if you follow my meaning. But, uh, we need to get this stuff done, so. What, what is that gonna cost, by the way? Do you have that itemized out by any means?
Twenty thousand dollars. But it's an added value, um, to the, to the, uh, golf course.
Well, again, city manager, take a look at that, and I guess you know what I'm talking about, right? All right, sounds good.
Councilman Allen?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo in what everybody else is saying. You've done a fantastic job over there. And when things were tight during COVID, you had to lay off a lot of people, and you had to not fill a lot of positions. So, uh, you did take the reins, so I appreciate it. And it, it also speaks to your, your crew, uh, the people that you have working for you. They all do a fabulous job, so thanks for those people as well.
My question is just for clarification. When you said that the SPOSS could only be used in Clayton County, are those the same SPOSS dollars that could be used in the Gobby Road part of Clayton County? Or are we just using those dollars for the GICC?
I'll refer to Jackson because he's expert.
Yes, uh, Gobby Road, well, part of Gobby Road is in Clayton County, which is past the, uh, Tracy White Recreation Center. It's on the other side. And when we went there to, uh, I brought before Mayor and Council, I went there and did the projects at Clayton County, and I met with Clayton County. So I didn't want us to lose the, the, the T, the Clayton County T-SPOSS. So I'd asked for a boatload of money. And when I say that, I'd asked for more money than we were ever be able to get, to tell you the truth. So I asked for a few million, but we're only gonna get one point two out of it. And so I knew that the GICC was, uh, there for a long time, and that we really needed some upgrades. So I, so I earmarked it, or so to speak, or put it under the Ge- Georgia International Convention Center, because it is in Clayton County. And that's what I did to, uh, to make sure we had funding for that.
All right, well, I, I think it's very much needed, but I also would like for us to also consider that side of Clayton County, because as you go towards West Fayetteville, for me, that's just some opportunity for, for, for capital projects.
Yes, sir, we did that, uh, the previous years, that we used that money, that's how the fire station died by, in Clayton County, West Fayetteville Road. So we felt that this, this cycle would be something that would be more beneficial to the citizens and everybody by, uh, collecting this money for the GICC.
Okay, motion to approve?
Thank you, Councilman Gay, is there a second?
A second.
No need to bother.
There is no motion.
Nope, it was just an update.
This is just an update.
Doesn't really need a motion.
Yep, there's, this is just an update.
Thank you all very much.
You got one anyways.
We, we, we just double approved by, never mind.
Item eight A is consideration of an action on an agreement with Kennesaw State University Museums Archives and Rare Books to develop a historical exhibit in the city. I believe this was, uh, sent back to legal, so, uh, we might, uh, secure the, an understanding regarding the intellectual property? And Mr. Denmark?
Yes ma'am, uh, the way the, the agreement was originally written, Kennesaw State would own, uh, the intellectual property, even though we were actually funding, uh, the project, and that was, um, kinda counterintuitive and kind of against what traditionally happens. Uh, generally, when you pay for the project, you own, uh, the intellectual property. So in section five of the agreement, uh, which is on packet page, uh, one twenty-one, uh, we have, uh, revised that language to provide that the city of College Park, uh, would, uh, own the intellectual property. However, we would allow Kennesaw State to use it for non-commercial purposes because they may need to promote themselves or do some other things. And so we wanna be fair to them and allow them to use it. But at the same time, we wanna retain the, the ownership, uh, rights to that, and that's reflected in, uh, section five.
All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I, I make a, wanna make a comment.
Okay.
Before I make a motion. And I'm a happy camper now. I didn't like the idea of, uh, losing the rights to that. But, uh, I wanted to bring up something else. On Friday, I had a meeting with, uh, uh, Ms., uh, Robinson Abdullah and, and a group, a newly formed citizens group that are trying to preserve, uh, the history of Price's Barber Shop and the building next to it. And I couldn't go into detail with them, nor can I go into detail in this meeting, except that, uh, they, as they indicated in the group that came, that group came and spoke, uh, during public comment, I also discussed it with Councilman Carr that, um, I thought it was a, a, a worthy thing to do to represent the African-American community that had been here, basically as a parallel community for many, many years before the airport expansion. And I recalled that we were doing this project. And so I thought, well, I believe the intent is to have a, a center. When we put the signs in, there'll be a walking trail, so to speak, uh, a path that you follow. You'll go to see the signs, they'll, uh, bring up historical landmarks like Price's Barber Shop, like Brady Center, et cetera, et cetera, in, like, uh, uh, the church on, uh, Calvary Baptist Church, which just had their hundredth anniversary a few years ago, where I delivered a proclamation. And you need someplace to have maybe some artifacts, maybe, uh, a place to sign in, maybe a place with a restroom, I don't know. But, uh, I was thinking that Price's Barber Shop, and I suggested that even though they wanted it to use as a historical center, I thought it could tie together with this walking trail. So I have, uh, made a, a co- request from, uh, the Economic Development Director, Michelle Alexander. And she has consulted with the people that are potentially going to have the property. I can't go into names or details. But, uh, just for the benefit of the group that I talked to, which I think I see some people still out there, it, I, I think maybe something can be worked out. Uh, don't, don't know, it's premature at this point, but, um, it's certainly positive, as I promised I would do. So I looked into that. And, uh, the other thing the group is, is asking, and they asked at the public comment, was that they be able to, a city attorney, that they be able to be, participate as a reviewer. You know, they're supposed to be a public focus group that would look at the material that had been prepared and so forth. And so I would like, uh, Jackson, if we could, to, uh, talk to them and see if that group, that, they wrote an excellent two-page document, which, my fault, I haven't sent to the council. I will email it to the council. I didn't think it was germane necessary to bring it up in the meeting, but I will send it to you. It's a really good, short history, and gives the reasons why it's important to do this. And, uh, as part of that, as part of their ask, they, they would like to participate to make sure that the facts are, uh, correct in there.
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, that, that's all I had. And so I'll move to approve.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second with discussion.
All right, go right ahead, Councilman Carr.
And, uh, tha- thank you, Ambrose, for that, uh, Black History moment. I, uh, I did support this project. Winston, I'm glad we put that language in. I considered it a work for hire, too. And, and another lifetime ago, uh, in my other career, work for hires were pretty common. This is something, uh, uh, Mr. Brady, Larry, we wanna make sure we get you with this organization as well as your neighbors. I stressed is, when this fella came down here proposing this, that he reach out to some of our local community folks, uh, in terms of the true history of, uh, African-Americans in this community. We have been through a lot. We've been pretty marginalized, and obviously discrimination, that's, uh, not lost on anyone up here. But, you know, we're, unfortunately, the people that have been the most marginalized in this community, tend to be the ones who exercise their voice the least. So that's something that we need to work on. Your voice is powerful. And again, that voice comes in coming to these meetings, seeing about your money in the budget, uh, voting in the elections. The smaller the election, the more it affects your life. I'm gonna say that again. The smaller the election, the more it affects your life and your pocketbook, uh, at the end of the day. But I, I wanna make sure that, uh, this, this outfit ties in with our local community and gets the buy-in in terms of the history, uh, that goes beyond the history that we have up here. It's a pretty historical day today, but I'm gonna touch on that in public comments. So, yeah, I, I second it. I'm glad to get it underway.
All right, let me get to Councilman Allen, and then I will move to you, Councilman Gay.
No, I just, I just, we need to get everybody involved in, in the project, that's, that's the only thing.
Councilman Gay?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. Uh, I absolutely think that the historical part of College Park that, that they represent, it's a significant, but I, this is a, this is a, this is for museum. It doesn't necessarily says African-American. I guess what I'm trying to say, we had a, we had a resident come down and talk about the History Center. I've actually been part of that History Center. That's amazing place, believe it or not. And I don't wanna minimize all of our history, not just our Black history, but all of our history, because it's just been as much positive in all, as she says, in all ethnicities. The other thing is, I'm proposing more than a plaque. I'm not talking about thirty-seven thousand, I'm talking about a seat at the table at Six West. And the next thing I wanna say is, there's some significant African-American achievements also in other parts of the city. I mean, just in closing, the first of the first settled in War Four. They should be recognized, Walt Bellamy, Richard Langford, some of the first, uh, flight attendants. The first flight attendant for Delta was over in York War. She lives in Jones Circle. She passed. So we need to do, know a little bit more about our history. And, and to that point, even if you look at Jamestown, if you look at the Eighteen Acres, when John Portman, who, who designed the skyline of Atlanta, graduated from Georgia Tech, that was his first assignment to build Jamestown. His very first assignment, so if we're gonna spend- So if we're gonna spend 37,000, let's dig into it and understand what... And the other thing I want to say is that there is a... There is a... I think it's a $10 million grant. It's called the Library of Museum Signs. A $10 million grant called Library of Museum Signs. The amount of time we put on this, we could also look at bigger grants to bring bigger dollars to our community. Library of Museum Signs. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item 8B is consideration of an action on a request on the purchase of Nova Switches for Distribution Automation in the amount of $367,620. This is a budgeted item. Questions for Mr. Richardson, starting with Councilman Clay?
I have gotten my questions answered. I'm a happy camper.
Councilman Carn?
Hugh, I know when you come in, it's always big numbers. And, yeah, I just say to myself, God almighty, you know. I get to understand. I mean, this is basically a big circuit breaker, right?
Automatic, automatic breakers.
And it reroutes.
Right, exactly.
And, you know, I just say to myself, I mean, ever since I've been here, plus 20 years, you know, we had good service and, you know, restoring power is pretty, pretty, pretty efficient. So in terms of time savings, is that what this is about more than anything?
It's more quicker restoration, quicker restoration to our customers.
And we do pretty good with restoration, you know, we do. And I guess this is some of the stuff that... You know, I'm not against it, first of all. So, but, you know, the next budgetary process, you know, discussion in detail, I guess, about items over a certain dollar amount usually was something that we would do and take the time to do it. But nevertheless, you know, this is something that's gonna get folks' lights on just a little bit faster and that's a good thing. But it ain't cheap, I'll say that. One thing that maybe...
Hold on, Councilman Clay. I'll come back to you. Councilman Allen?
No, I think it's important we get it back on as quick as we can. As Mr. Evans mentioned, they got his power back on very, very quick with squirrel going up that, you know. But power restoration might help out a lot in some of the other areas.
Councilman Gay?
Well, I was involved when you first brought it to us. But one of the biggest complaints in my ward was power outages. People's like, you know, for squirrel, clown, polio thing. But to be able to get us back on without going all the way to the transformer, I think it's technology that we just gotta have. I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Gay. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Councilman Clay? I know you wanted to respond.
We've already moved and seconded. People are happy with it. There's no point in me commenting.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's unanimous. Next item is consideration of an action on a request for the purchase of electrical material for construction and maintenance in the amount of $695,209.10. This is also a budgeted item. Questions for Mr. Richardson, Councilman Clay?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
I second with a comment.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Allen. Councilman Carn, did you have anything?
I may, after Ken speaks.
It's your opportunity right now. Okay?
I may, after Ken Allen speaks, I may have something.
All right. We'll move on to Councilman Allen.
Okay, and I... Again, we talked about this earlier and, you know, I was wondering why you didn't go with one contractor. And again, it's another opportunity for us to save money throughout the city. And thanks to you and your folks, you went to each one and took the best and the cheapest to save money. So thank you for that.
Councilman Gay?
Is any of this in Rockland Homes?
Yes, it is. It's some more material for that and for the Summersby project on West Fayetteville.
And a lot of this be reimbursed from?
Right.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. We'll move on to item 8D, which is consideration of an action on a power purchase contract with ATL Data Centers. Mr. Richardson?
Put this simply, we're asking to fast-forward our existing contract by 13 months. It's something we really hate to do, but it's something we have no option to do. And that's to go ahead and cancel our current contract with 30-day notice and give them a new contract, which will move them from a fixed rate to an hourly integral rate going forward. The integral rate will include some adders and it also include a franchise fee. So it's only a win for us in this situation as far as revenue.
Questions for Mr. Richardson. Councilman Clay?
I got all my questions answered.
Councilman Carn?
Now, Hugh, is this the Clean Spark outfit?
Yeah, this is... This is the... You started out Virtual Citadel years ago and now it's called ATL Data Centers.
Okay. But it was Clean Spark in between there, right?
Yeah, they are the parent company of all of these, I think.
I thought at one point they were gonna... They were looking at moving on. But so we're solid... This'll take us, what is that, another, what, five years?
Yeah, I mean, this is a three-year and one-month contract. I don't know their response to this. Either way, we'll come out good.
All right. I remember we talked about the possibility of getting another one of these type of outfits in here.
Yeah, I'm saying going forward, we cannot give out any more guaranteed rates.
Okay, all right.
Councilman Allen?
No, I have no... We talked about this earlier today and I think it's the right move to make. And it's, again, another way that you and your folks have tried to save the cities the money.
Councilman Gay?
I don't have any questions.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Carn. Is there a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's unanimous. Item 8E, consideration of an action on a power purchase contract with Clean Block Data Center.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Any comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Same...
Same thing.
Same thing.
Same thing, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item 8F is consideration of an action on looping in the water system at the end of John Calvin Avenue. Mr. Myers provided us with the documentation for this item. Questions for Mr. Myers? We'll start with Councilman Clay.
Now, this was approved actually by council a couple of years ago. It's in my ward. It's in John Calvin. I apologize to the people who live there, who have had to put up with the water. The real estate agent that sold them the property told them it was in the works. It was in the works. They were right, but it didn't get done. And these people have been putting up with colored water due to sedimentation in the pipe. It's not that it's dangerous, but it makes your plumbing look terrible. And who wants to drink brown water? So it was approved. I passed the information to Jackson from the minutes. It showed that it was approved. And we've gotten the easement. And it's something that I think Jackson has moved lightning-fast on. And it's ready to go. So I move to approve it.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Carn. Any further comments?
I just have a question. Timeframe? Do we have a timeframe?
We're gonna... It should start on it within two weeks.
Okay.
They've gotta, you know, call in, locates, and they gotta show up for locates and all that. Make sure everything lined up. But you guys, I mean, the council... Mayor Council was talking about it and I found out that we already had the materials here. So it just didn't take me very long and I talked to the housing authority. And we're gonna do a little rerouting on it to make it easier than what it was before. And so in two weeks, it should be done.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. No old business, no new business. City Attorney's report?
Nothing this evening, ma'am.
Thank you. City Manager's report?
Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm just... We're still working with our legislative delegates about the ambulances, that ambulance service and hospitals. I'm concerned about that. And so I'm working... We're working with our lobbyists to make sure that we get more service in the city because it's coming out of Grady and it's such a... It takes hours for Grady to get here for ambulance service. We only have two transporters here. We can't transport them unless it's absolutely emergency. So we're still working for that. We're also decided, I talked to Chief Taylor there, we're going to get a storefront for the... Change it to a storefront for the Public Safety Building because I think it's been way too long to look at the plywood out there. And we felt that that needed to... We're gonna work on getting a storefront because the supply chain is just something completely off the chain. Also, they poured the second half of the Rose Street Bridge. So now the decking's been completely poured out there at the Rose Street Bridge, moving right along with that project. And they're also still working on the solar panels. Still got a grant for the solar panels at the Public Safety Building. And Ron and I's been still working close with that, so we'd have backup to the backup to the backup. Send enough backups? So I worked on that. So also, we're going to interview for the police chief on November 1st at the GICC.
All right.
And, oh, yeah, I forgot. The 25th of October at 11 o'clock, we're going to have the Land of Vietnam Veterans Business Association's gonna have that memorial out here on the 25th. And Councilman Allen is going to speak at that as the mayor approaches. Thank you.
Thank you. Reporter, Mayor and Council. Councilman Clay?
Yeah, I was just very touched by the ceremony today for the dedication of the building in memory of Jack Longino. I think he touched a lot of people. And I think he contributed 28 years of his life to the betterment of the city. And I was very pleased about the ceremony. As far as next week goes, I will be out of town on travel for the city. And I will not attend the memorial event, but please extend my best wishes for that event. A lot of people have given in service to our country and I think it's a fitting thing that that memorial is in front of our auditorium.
Yes, sir.
So that's all I had.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Councilman Carn?
I had a few things. A good event this evening for Mayor Longino. It was good to see folks come out. It was good to see Jack's mom there. And I think it meant a lot for her to be able to see this. Again, I will say, I think this is something that Jack should have seen when he was here. But that was then, this is now, and I'm glad we got it done. I'm not pleased in the manner in which we had to get it done, the pushing and prodding and difficulties and delays. There's certain things that you shouldn't delay. But it was a good event. Was glad to see Mrs. Bellamy and Mrs. Phillips and some of our folks there. It was really good. Well-deserved and well-deserved. Mr. Brady, I'll see you. I definitely appreciate your comments. And I just gotta say, you just seem not to age. You haven't aged a day since I met you, man, back in '03. I don't know what it is or what you're doing, but keep doing that. It's working. But it's good to see you. Right. I want to talk about these front-facing services. They're important to residents. At the end of the day, there are a lot of back-room things that make the front-facing services possible and more efficient. But at the end of the day, most residents don't care about the back-room operations of it. The front-facing services are where the rubber meets the road. When they call 911, God forbid. Fire department, so on and so forth, police, sanitation. These are the important things to residents. How we provide them and the mechanism that we do it, they're less concerned with and more concerned with the promptness of the service and the affordability of it at the end of the day. To our residents, I would recommend you come to every meeting that you can to hear what's going on here. It is so very, very, very important. The local level, again, it affects you more than you really, really even imagine. Lot of comments today. Every public comment was a good comment because it came from the residents. And at the end of the day, these are the people that are responsible for our bills as well as staff salaries. Now, we don't really get a salary up here. We get a stipend. But they paid a freight for all of this. And at the end of the day, I always say that public comments is the most important part of any meeting. I feel like without public comments, there is no meeting. Because at the end of the day, that's what we're all up here for. And, hey, you get criticized, you get beat up on and chewed on, and that's just par for the course. And the more we hear from residents, the better we're gonna be. We're not perfect and we all want to do better. And we've been making good progress and I think we're gonna be doing a whole lot better coming the first of the year. Get us a solid city manager in here and I think we're gonna be okay. We congratulate Ms. Willis for her recognition. I want to congratulate the mayor for her recognition as 100th Most Influential Woman. You know, I was raised by women. I was raised by my mother, of course, my grandmother, and my two sisters. That was my nucleus family. So I've been raised to really have the most, a lot of respect for women. I have three daughters and I have one granddaughter. And, you know, women carry such a big burden and an unfair burden in this society, in this city as well. There are a lot of things that I see happen that are just so unfair and unjust on the national level, the state level. Obviously, you hear a lot of things about, you know, women's rights and so on and so forth. And, you know, I just say to myself, there is such a double standard with so many different things and so much unfairness that goes on. In this city, women represent the majority of the population. But not only that, the majority of the homeowners in this city are women. If we want to get specific, black women. The majority of the renters in this city are women. If we want to get specific, black women. Before I got elected, we had one woman up here representing the women in this community, Cynthia Jones. And I used to say, and I still say in my head, any meeting that I'm in, if there's not a woman in the room in that meeting, I don't consider that a real, real meeting, not in this city. Because it's hard to carve out the obvious. And I'm so proud to see our female department heads that do a great job for us. I just want to take a minute out and let y'all know how much we all appreciate you all. But you bear extra burdens, in fairness, that, let's just be frank, you know, some guys don't have to bear that burden. But I just want y'all to know it's not lost on me and I really appreciate it. I do think this city does operate sometimes in too many silos. And sometimes there are too many, what do you call them, cliques? You know, some groups have their favorites over here and some groups have their favorite... You know, some groups have their favorites over here and some groups have their favorites over there. And, you know, it's not a competition. We gotta figure that out. And, uh, it's not one team against another. We gotta sit down and put our heads together and do this thing collectively. Without a lot of the, I guess I'd just say, without a lot of the things that, that may hold us back sometimes. I'm hoping that, uh, this city manager, once we get someone in here, that they have a complete understanding of what it is we're looking for and our expectations. You know, in terms of discussions up here, uh, here's my opinion. You know, I don't mind being interrupted. I never mind being interrupted. It's part of a free-flowing discussion up here. And truth be told, y'all, we've never really had a big problem with discussions up here. I mean, I got back here in, in January and obviously there were some big differences. And this is just my feelings, you know. I wanna be free to discuss things. And again, I don't mind being interrupted. It's, it's not an insult to me or anything like that. If somebody jumps in, come on and jump in here. I, 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 I wanna hear every side of everything. Nobody up here knows it all, but some of the best ideas come through unrestricted discussions. Now, they may not all be perfect, but, uh, I guess what I'm trying to say is we need a little, we need a little elbow room up here, a little latitude. Because to talk some of this stuff around, it's not gonna always follow a certain script. And again, I'm not that picky on someone interrupting me at all. You know, my word isn't the final word. I wanna hear from everybody. There's another side to everything. And I've been speaking about something and I think I had a pretty good bead on it. And someone jumps in and they say, well, look at the other side of this like this. And I say, I, I never actually thought about that. But if they weren't allowed to jump in, the more discussing you have, the better you come to a medium that makes the most sense. That's our job up here. You know, we get paid for two meetings a month. The rest are free and there's a whole lot of free. But you gotta be free to discuss this stuff and talk around it until you can come to the conclusions. So, you know, I feel restricted up here a lot of the times. And I think it's something maybe we need to discuss at some other point. Uh, but I wanna be able to, you know, be able to discuss this stuff where we can feel like we can talk with each other. And even if somebody talks over each other, I, you know, it's, it's not the end of the earth. I'm, I'm fine with it. Now, we wanna keep good decorum and not be rude to one another, but it's never really been a problem up here before over the years that I've been here, that there was an issue. Someone to jump in and it's okay. But anyway, last thing I'll say, uh, I mentioned earlier that today was the first day of our early voting. And folks, again, we have a deplorable rate of civic participation in this city. I think we've got to do better. I think we need to try to get our residents to understand what this process is all about. You know, voting is, it's basically, it's the reposis- representation of, of your existence in public as far as the government is concerned. It is, it is really, really important. And, and in some instances, it's the only way that you can be seen or heard uh, i- i- in your state, in your county. It's kind of the only official recognition of who we are as far as the government is concerned with some things. You know, voting is, 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 it's money. It's, 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 it's money involved. It's, when, when a neighborhood doesn't get something, and I'm speaking on this because this is the first day of early voting. But there's some neighborhoods that I could eyeball and I can say, that neighborhood has a twenty percent or lower rate of voter participation just by looking at the neighborhood. The other neighborhoods I can look in and I can say, that, that neighborhood has a seventy percent voter, uh, participation rate in all likelihood. I've done a lot of study with voting. I've managed precincts for Fulton County for many years before I even considered running for any offices. It's important and elected officials, you know, that old adage, the squeakiest wheel is gonna get the oil. It's true. You know, when residents vote and participate, I'm just gonna tell y'all, they get the attention of the elected representatives. And sometimes that, that attention is disproportionate, but that's a natural occurrence. Because it's hard when you only have one pot of money and you've got so many things that you have to do and so many responsibilities and things that you need to take care of. But you're gonna, you, the squeakiest wheel is gonna get the oil sometimes. You know, my three daughters, they're all grown up now, but when they were little, you know, one of them ate a little more than the others just about every morning. And eventually, obviously, we would, that child would get a little more food. And the other two, they would leave a little food on the plate, so they got a little bit less food cause they were throwing away food. Now, did we love them any less? Of course not. But they didn't need as much or want as much whereas the other child wanted and expected more. So guess what? They got more. And I'm saying that to say, voting is important. You want your voice heard. And if your street is voting and your neighborhood is voting, you're gonna get the attention. Now, I try to make sure all of my area gets the attention, but again, there's only so much money to go around. So I cannot stress that enough. On the federal level, when they look at College Park for funding, you know, folks look at how many votes, how, 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 how people participate because there's only so much federal money to go around. So this is important for this city. It's important for, for funding. It's important for county issues, you name it. People look at, well, if I have only a certain amount of money to spend and I got fifteen cities, I'm gonna, well, if I'm getting a ten percent participation in one city and I get, I'm getting eighty percent participation in another, well, it shouldn't, but that's gonna affect someone's, uh, could, could affect someone's decision-making. So I want us to stress and take a look next year at how we can increase our participation. And it will give us a stronger voice on the state level, on the county level, on the federal level. And I want us to look at that next year because with such a highly transient population, it's hard to keep voter rolls in this city. But I think we need to make a concerted effort to make sure we're reminding folks to be registered to vote and to participate in this process because it, it pays dividends, um, in the long run. So, sorry about the ramble, but, uh, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. Councilman Allen?
Uh, I'll just chime in. Uh, the dedication for Jack Longino was, was, was very, very good, well deserved. And, and, you know, it's nice to see the, the sign up there that says Jack P. Longino. Citywide Festival, Councilman Gay, you did a fabulous job. You put a lot of time into that. I got, I'm sure you got an extra paycheck for, for, for putting in all that. But no, thanks for all your work because you, you made the whole thing work, so I appreciate that. I was gonna suggest painting the, the plywood at the police station, uh, white just to make it look better. But I see Jackson's already, Jackson's already working on that, so, uh, that's good. There's a lot of new retirement ideas, programs that are, that are showing up. So I think we probably need to take a look. Maybe that's a way we can reduce some, some costs looking at, and retirement programs or something that we need to, to be looking at for our people in, in the future. Last thing I got is, is again, get out there and vote. Uh, I got out there. There was not many people in line. You could go right next door at the library, uh, vote. Uh, everybody needs to get out there, so that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Councilman Gay?
Well, I just see a couple of my constituents still in the audience, so, uh, Brother Mohammed and, um, sitting in for IT. I just wanna thank y'all for hanging out with us so long. Thank you for coming. All y'all came Saturday. Thank you. Enjoyed seeing you. Thank you for your blessings to Pastor Troy. I'm sure he appreciated that. You know, I don't know if, uh, my constituents actually vote for me, but we don't always get along. But one thing we can agree on, we always come together as family in respect. That's one thing we do. We always come together as a matter of fact. He called me, first time the lights go off, the first person calling is your family. I want my lights on, brother. And so I respect y'all and I appreciate what all y'all do. You know, the festival was, I think God came down and hung out with us for a day because I myself have not experienced that type of energy in a really long time. It was organic. A lot of that stuff wasn't even planned. And, you know, I get in trouble if I start thanking people, but I wanna say something. You know, we were given for the first time, money from the city for that festival. For the first time in six years, we were given monies. We was given, uh, monies to kick that thing off. It took me a month to raise that money and to actually not do anything for my family to make that happen. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, I'm not, I'm not complaining about it because it was, I enjoyed it. But I'm just saying, we've had other festivals where they were completely funded by the city this year. But, you know, that's our creed. We always do what we have to do and, and it comes together. But I just think that here on council, we need to start being more respectful and equitable. We should have gotten the same amount of funding as other events. We should not have to have worked that hard for something that gives back to our community, so. But, you know, one thing I learned about that festival was that I never seen a staff be so professional. I mean, some people didn't participate, but the ones who participated, I mean, I, I learned from them. I don't wanna call people names because I don't want y'all to start bothering them, but I, I have some people's names I just gotta call. If I don't, if you don't hear your name, it's intentional, but Ms. Miller, she blessed us. Our interim public works director, he blessed us. His staff was phenomenal. I mean, they came out for four weeks, participated. Lance, Lance was phenomenal. Lance spent a week at the splash pad trying to make it come on. When did he come on? A week, making sure that, that water came out of that thing. You know, it was a lot of people there, a lot of people. And, you know, for a crowd that size, you as a police department, we saw, we saw the police. But let me just tell you, with a crowd that size, if something had, uh, happened, we would not have been prepared. That should have been a very planned police project. And I mean that respectfully, but having said that, nothing happened. But there are two police officers who stepped up. That was Sergeant Dixon. A community officer who just stepped up. She just became a leader. She just came outside and did everything she needed to do. And that was Penny Agar. This man brings his entire family and he just steps up. He stepped up to the plate and, and they stuck out. Uh, all of you directors was amazing. I don't, you know you were. Finance, power, you guys were amazing. So I just wanna personally say, on behalf of our ward, on behalf of my family, I really appreciate what y'all did. I would have nothing but love for y'all. So that's, that's that. Now we move on to something else. That's basically all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, let me start, um, with an apology to the Willis family. Because if anything that I did exacerbated your pain in regard to losing your home to fire, I want to apologize all the way. I reached out to city personnel about that situation. I did not reach out to them personally. And if, if that caused additional pain or was seen in a way that was characterized as vindictive or anything else, my apologies. I would never want to set, set that kind of example, uh, as I walk in these shoes and that's it. I'm sorry. Councilman Gay, your hard work paid off. It was a fantastic festival. I know you've gotten lots of accolades this evening, but it, I mean, as soon as I saw the slides, I mean, I, I really like slides. I, I really wanted to go down the slide, but I, I restrain, uh, myself. But it was a, it was a wonderful afternoon. Uh, Saturday was also the College Park Rams homecoming. Uh, we had a lot of events going on in College Park on Saturday and it was just a great day to be out and about. And, um, today was a really touching ceremony as well. And I was glad to see the entire Longino family present. And if this building deserves to be named after anyone, it is Mayor Longino. And so I want to express my gratitude for the twenty-eight years that he spent serving this community and representing us on the local, the state, the federal levels to continue to work for this city. Speaking of working on the federal level, I am off to Washington tomorrow evening. Uh, I've been invited to the White House to, uh, participate in a, in an event called Communities in Action, Building a Better Georgia, and, um, a number of the mayors across the state. And, uh, community leaders have been invited as well. Looking forward to representing the city and talking about some of the ways in which we have been working through, uh, the last couple of years and initiatives to, to really continue to strengthen our community and build the community that we deserve. I also spent some time at the discount mall this afternoon. And I wanna thank interim Chief McCrery, her team, all of the local police officers who've been involved in that situation and the Fulton County Sheriff's Office for their efforts that are ongoing. Because there is a lot of stuff in there. There is a lot of material that is allegedly counterfeit. And it's gonna take some time to inventory that, uh, that material. Uh, but we are a better community because our law enforcement is looking out for us on a daily basis. And I'm grateful for everyone's efforts in that regard. And we will have a special guest at our next meeting for our workshop. I've extended an invitation to Kay Love from GMA to discuss how we should be running our meetings. This was one of the things that we talked about at our retreat. And, uh, Ms. Love will be at our workshop so we can have a more robust discussion about how we should proceed and make sure that we are tending to the business of the, of the community and doing that in an efficient, uh, manner. But also making sure that we are sharing all the information that we need to share as well. And I will be reaching out to each one of you because I was speaking, um, with Ms. Frances Kennedy about Keep America Beautiful. We'd like to coordinate and do a Keep America Beautiful project in each one of your wards. Uh, and so we will start talking about that, I think, tomorrow, uh, to see where you'd like to target that and, uh, how we can collaborate on that. So I'm looking forward to that as well. And lastly, Mr. Myers, you've been hard at work and I wanna, I, I know that there were, there were some comments throughout the, throughout the day. Uh, but you, you have from the John Calvin issue, uh, to a number of other things. Just wanted to say that while you are in interim status, we do appreciate the work that you're doing, uh, in this position every single day. And, uh, thank you for your efforts because a lot of them go unsung. Uh, but just wanted to take the time and appreciate everything that you have done in the role since you had, since you stepped in.
Thank you.
Uh, we still have, uh, some things to discuss in executive session. So at this time, I'll take a motion to enter in, re-enter executive session for the purposes of real estate litigation and personnel.
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Gay, you, 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 yeah. Thank you. That is unanimous.